There was a network problem.
You're gonna make me stand up, aren't you? Now that I got all of this.
We'll call the meeting to order. Real call please, Mrs. Harrington.
Mr. Bennington?
Here.
Mrs. Downs?
Here.
Mrs. Huben?
Here.
Ms. Larmour?
Here.
Mr. Coleman?
Here.
Please stand for a pledge allegiance.
I have a pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Perry'sburg Schools welcomes you to the condo committee and the WTA two nights' rule of education meeting. At this time, we have a superintendent's report. Mr. Hasler?
Thank you. And for those that are joining us, I apologize for the delay. We had a little bit of a relay problem. So I think we have that resolved and we should be up and running. So thank you for tuning in today or watching it at a future time. So I wanted just to provide a little bit of information, just the back-to-school plan, student counter change, and then the impact with staff. So I'll talk about that and the motion that'll come a little bit later, this board meeting, the recommendation. But first, I just wanted to say that in the last week, there's been a lot of activities, you know, after we've released the plan. So just wanted to share a few of those things with you. So we did go to each of the buildings here in the last week with Sarah Stockwell, Director Wellness, and our head nurse, Debbie Reddick, to meet with the principals and the health aides at each location, just to review the process in terms of the logistics and process, in terms of what happens when students are in school and they come down with symptoms. You've heard that we each have to set up a COVID room in each building? And you've been in our buildings. Where is there space to do that? So the team has been working at each location in terms of how do we set this up? How do we make sure that we have a process to, you know, care for those students? But also, at the same time, keep them separated from others. And so that's something we've been working on. There's been quite of, you know, just more informational becoming to families about that process and what happens when you get that call from school, because that happens a lot in a regular year. And, you know, somebody has a temperature, sore throat, a cough, all those kinds of things are typical occurrences. Well, now they take on a little different significance. So we're working out a document for parents to kind of walk them through what that process, and also for us as well. The other thing I wanted to mention is, now that we have the school year kind of plugged in and we are moving towards reopening, the next conversation piece has been athletics and extracurriculars. So last week, we organized a meeting with the Northern Lakes League, and those are our member schools that Perry'sburg High School, Junior High compete with. And so we have a meeting set up for Thursday just to get everyone in the same room to talk about, you know, the fall. There's been some different recommendations that have come up from different organizations. But again, as it stands right now, it's up to each local school district to make a determination in terms of how they want to do athletics, you know, in the future. And there's some guidelines in terms of the return to practice when the governor approved that this summer that we are following in terms of what has to be done at each location for the different sports that are ready to go. But just some of the things that we need to kind of cover in this meeting, just to give you an idea of how broad this conversation will be. Spectators, you know, who'll be permitted to attend the games, seating indoor versus outdoors, there's a different concern with being indoors versus outdoors. What is the mask policy? We talk about concessions. Are big part of the Friday night experience or any other experience? How is that going to work? How do we handle students that want to attend? Home games and away games? You know, so the seating arrangement, indoors versus outdoors. I've been in touch with Mr. Schleeder, our band director. That's a big part of Friday nights. And, you know, how do we navigate that? Is the band able to travel? Do they want to travel? Can we safely allow them to travel? And what about home games? You know, and where do we seat them when we think about spreading out our crowds? We talk about, in our league, we have representatives from Lucas Wood and Henry County. Each county has its own idea of what they want to see done and how they want to see that done. How do we coordinate that within our leagues? So if we're heading out to Henry County for a contest at Napoleon, are fans and teams going to experience something very different from what we're doing here in Wood County versus what's happening in Lucas County? So there's quite a few things that we need to kind of get an understanding of. How do you do social distancing with tickets? Which is another consideration. Travel, how many things can be on a bus to travel? I know we've talked about that last week in terms of transporting students. Do we hold that same requirement? Cleaning and sanitizing during and after events is something that's very important to us. Also, you know, you're carrying the football. How often does that have to be changed? Volleyball. Just some of those kinds of things obviously are important. And then, how do we... So imagine a Monday morning, a Tuesday morning, a Wednesday morning. We have a contest, let's say volleyball, and we learn that one of the other players tested positive. What is our protocol? How do we handle that? Who's in charge of that in the district? Or if it's reversed, how do we contact somebody in another district? And then what is our expectation of how that should be handled? Will everybody be playing by the same rules in the league? Also, we're concerned about our officials. You know, we want to make sure if you've been to an event, you know, most of the officials are not all the youngest folks. That was a huge concern, remains a huge concern in finding officials. So many are retiring and so many few young ones are coming up. And so these are students that are at risk. So how do we, you know, how do we work that out? So I think those are just some of the kinds of things that we're, you know, dealing with in terms of athletics. Summit County, it was released. They sent a letter to member schools in Summit County. So think of Hudson, Solon, Twinsburg. It's kind of a suburb of Akron between Cleveland. And they sent out a guidance document. And they, again, recommendations. They're not telling anyone what to do. And I think that's going to be perhaps a preview of things to come. But they're saying that, you know, in this document, it's been circulating in social media. It just, you know, they're saying limiting two spectators per athlete or eliminating all in-person spectators. They talk about, you know, contact sports being very challenging to prevent the spread and should be used, you know, high degree of caution. And then they came out with a kind of a matrix of all the different activities and whether they are low-risk, medium-risk, and high-risk for sports. And also, I think the big thing that they recommend is not beginning competition until October 1st and having a shortened season and then waiting to get things going. So that's kind of an interesting thing that we're starting to hear individual counties and different groups doing. There are some Ohio NAIA colleges that have come out here in the last week since we last met that said they're moving fall sports to spring, you know, kind of switching football to spring sport. So I think there's a lot of things that will be circulating. But I think for us, it's going to continue to be an issue for, you know, in the next couple of weeks in terms of how do we proceed and what do we do? And certainly following the lead of the Health Department here. The other thing I wanted to mention, since last week, we've received, I would say, hundreds of emails and phone calls across the district, people with questions. And, you know, we've been trying to respond to as many of those as we can. As you can imagine, folks are just buried with email. So what we are doing is we're creating an FAQ document with many of these common reoccurring questions that we can then share out with families. So we're looking to do that sometime this week. So that should help provide a little more clarity to those, you know, questions that we're seeing asked over and over again. And we're getting new questions every day. And there are frankly just some questions that are going to take time. It's like untangling a knot, you know, where someone has a special circumstance and they want, you know, these five questions answered over their situation. And, you know, it's the first time we're hearing this and first time we've thought through that particular situation. So it's a little bit of a challenge for us. The Perry'sburg Schools virtual campus, so as of Monday morning, we had 161 students that have signed up for it. And that's the full online option. So, you know, so we do have a breakdown. So that window is open until, I think, August 3rd. And, you know, I think that is something that we are getting a lot of questions, you know, as parents make that decision. So I know they've been busy creating additional resources for parents to answer many of those questions. And I know that's something that they've been working, you know, pretty hard to do. So, but then, you know, the transportation, the virtual campus, those seem to be, you know, two questions that we're getting a lot of. And I think the not having high school transportation, I think families are starting to process that, what that means in really unique situations. And then, of course, people wanting to align their particular days with other family members. And we're going to work very hard to make that happen. And so these are kind of the new things that are COVID-related. In this time of year, we're getting ready for that kickoff and we're getting the normal kinds of beginning-of-the-year questions. So those are also blended in. So we want to make sure that we're touching, getting as many touches as we can with that. And, you know, so we'll have some more information coming out in those areas. So just wanted to give kind of an update. I know there's been, you know, just every day, there's something new and things that we want to continue to share out. And that brings us to, you know, the agenda item this evening. And with that, we have a resolution partially suspending non-teaching employee contracts. So when you think about the school and how it operates, it's a pretty, it's a pretty complex organization. And we talked about the last time that 108 days expired between the day that the governor announced schools were going to be closed and then the guidelines to reopen them. And that was longer than virtually any other type of, you know, operation in the state. And I think that shows complexity. But the one thing that is pretty simple about schools to understand is we are here to serve the students. And our workday and everything that we do is centered around meeting the needs of those students when they're with us. With COVID, obviously going into a hybrid situation, like most other districts in the area, you know, things are changing internally. And our schedule changed where we have a remote Monday for all students across the district. And then even at the high school, junior high, we have alternating days where 50% of the students will be present. That arrangement does impact, and we talked about it briefly at the last meeting, does impact how we need to use staff moving forward. And the consequence of the world that we're living in right now is when the students are present in school, there are some staff members whose job relies on students being present. And when they're not, they can't very well do their job. So there's a couple of areas that we will have to address, adjusting contracts or doing a reduction in force, which is eliminating those positions. So tonight, we are asking the board to change or suspend, partially suspending the non-teaching employee contracts of individuals who, on that Monday, when there are no students present, are not required to be there. The largest group is bus drivers. So if there are no students waiting to be brought in on that Monday morning, what role do they play in the school, you know, in the school at that particular moment? This, you know, monitors who are there in the building, who are there because the students are there, helping supervise. On those days, there's no students to perform their role. So we are asking the board to obviously reflect that with their individual employment contracts. So instead of a five-day week, they'll be reduced to a four-day week. I had an opportunity to talk to a number of those staff members today. And it's very, you know, it's a very real and a very challenging situation for them and their families. This decision does not devalue the work and the role that they do in the district. It does not minimize the contribution that they play. But when there are no students on those days, their role just can't be performed. And that's what is really driving this. Food service, we talked at length, and this is coming up at our next meeting, the work session. But we've, we talked at length at how do we deliver food to students and create food options for students? And we're very proud of our food service staff and the products that they provide. We hear so many great things about the different offerings and they do just a tremendous job. But when we look at operating the school day in this situation, how can we avoid creating a hotspot in that building around the lunch line? When you think about lunches and if you've been in the building when lunch occurs, you know, kids want to participate in our school lunch program, which is rare. And they line up and they wait and they go through the line and they get their food in their elbow-to-elbow. You just can't do that. So we're looking at a delivery system model where we'll prepare the meals ahead of time, push them out to the buildings. But again, if we're not doing the hot meals on the tray like we used to, that changes in terms of what our needs are. And that will cause us to seek a reduction in their staff. And it is incredibly frustrating to be in this position. And it is no fault of their own that they're caught up, like many people in our community, in the situation that until this gets straightened out, it's just going to be a challenge to deal with. So it's with a heavy heart that we're bringing these, you know, recommendations to the board. And I think it's something that is... Things change and they could change for the better. You know, we want to bring these folks back. And we're worried about them not coming back, finding other jobs. These are very talented people. And, but we also know that the pendulum could swing the other way where we could be full remote. And then what do we do? So we're going to be dealing with this all year. And it's just very challenging. The folks that are getting this news are certainly not happy. And I can respect that. And those that aren't getting reductions are certainly nervous about the future as well, because it is uncertain. And at any rate, you know, this is the first step that we have tonight. By reducing the contracts, everyone is still employed. If folks had health insurance last year, even with the reduction in a day, they will continue to maintain their health care. So that's something that, you know, we worked out with the employees. And I think that provides a little bit of stability to those that rely on that. And then, no one in the transportation rank is losing their job. They're having their hours cut. So there's no bumping that needs to take place, which is part of the OPEC contract language. We have to have a bump meeting in food service, which is done by seniority and because we are eliminating positions. So if you have more seniority in one location, you could bump somebody with less seniority in another location. So that is going to take place on Friday. And then we will bring the board on that Tuesday the names of those individuals that are left after that meeting without a position. You know, we'll ask the board for that approval. So it is, you know, we talked with some folks in food service. And in 2010, when we had the reductions, 52 positions, food service was one of the few areas that wasn't touched because they are self-funded. They are, you know, they raise their own money. They operate in the black each year, which for a school operation is an incredible testament to their abilities. But this isn't about that. It is not about the job that they're doing. It is simply how can we logistically put that many kids in one location at one time and funnel them through the same doorway? And we just can't do that. And that's why these groups that are so closely tied to students are the ones that are feeling it the most. And that's a challenge. So just wanted to kind of explain a little bit about that. And, you know, not something we are looking forward to. And we're certainly looking forward to a resolution to call all these folks back sometime in the near future. I'll open up to, you know, so that was the presentation. And I know that the action item is next on the agenda, so.
Question to Mr. Hasler?
I have a question. I added this up and it's 18%. Why not 20? Because it's going to be one day. So if one day is 20%, why wouldn't it be 20%?
What are, I'm not sure, the resolution or...
Oh, no, like the, if you look at all the hours on the sheet that you gave us, yeah, the attachment, the attachment. Yes, like if you add up all those numbers, it equals 18%, not 20. So for eliminating one day, and that would be 20%, Monday would be 20% of, you know, if I do... Why is it, why does it come out to 18% and not 20?
Well, I think in that calculation, I'm assuming you're including the number of Mondays and days and weeks all being equal. And that's probably not the case. So, you know, if you have a shortened week, if you have a Monday that's a holiday, that would throw that calculation off?
No, I didn't, I just took your numbers here that were on the sheet.
Yes, I understand.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So it has to do with, they already had some Mondays off?
Yeah, I, you know, maybe offline we can talk about that. I'm really not following the question, so I, you know...
What number are you looking at?
So...
If you have original contract days, 189, and then new contract days, and you figure out, you add those all up and figure it out, it's 18%. And I'm saying if it should be 20% if it's, you're actually eliminating a day.
Right. And I think it's based on the number of Mondays. And they don't need those Mondays anymore. And there were some of those Mondays that they weren't going to work anyway because they were holidays.
Okay.
So that would float into that number. So it wouldn't be an equal equation.
Okay, that's all I mean. It's not an equal equation. One day equals 20%. Gotcha.
Right, right. Some Mondays were already off of holidays. Remember, we picked the Monday in part because I think there were 32 Mondays that were workdays versus 37 or 38, like Wednesdays or Thursdays. So that is really what's driving that equation. I don't know if I'm explaining it.
That makes sense then.
Tom, I had a question about the virtual academy.
Yeah.
I mean, when you think about other virtual academies, those are considered charter schools. Since this is run through us by us, is it a charter school in-house then within our district? So we don't have that charter school expense?
Right. So to be a charter school, you have to go through a process to apply with the Department of Education. You have a separate Board of Education. You become a separate entity. You have to have a sponsor. And it's a very elaborate process.
Yeah.
And so that is something that you would have to do and that we create its own, you know, its own school district, basically. What we're doing is we're proposing a program within our, under our umbrella of Perry'sburg Schools. So when you think of, you know, students that are in the gifted program, it's a little bit different program. Students who are on IUP is a little bit different program. Students that are, you know, getting other types of services, ESL, English as a Second Language. There's unique characteristics to those programs that are different than what everyone else is experiencing, but they're still under our umbrella. And they might have different teachers working with only that population and no other population. So I think we would look at it as being a program that's under our umbrella that does that. So, you know...
So it's not the same as the now-defunct E-COT or anything like that?
No, nothing like that. So...
Good, okay.
So how, and more information is going to come out. But I think what we're looking at is, I know parents have asked, will you have Perry'sburg teachers, you know, writing and creating the curriculum? And creating in grades K through 12, and you think about all the different disciplines, having an entire, you know, online curriculum with over 600 course offerings and to develop that over the course of one summer, to convert all that would be an impossible task. So what we've done is we screened several different content providers. So, and some people have wondered about that. And what we've said is, you know, this is an area that we're contracting with this group to come in to help support us. And we have that situation from time to time, you know. We've contracted out for PT or OT or speech. We've, we've contracted out for, for PT or OT or speech and sometimes, you know, in a certain situation, we have to bring folks in to, to support. So we select them, they're working under our umbrella again, using that analogy, but maybe they're hired actually through the county or through a third-party provider. So, so what we've done is we've set up, and, and that happens now. I mean, we have a number of, of employees that work every day side by side with our staff who are technically Wood County employees, for example. Or Lake Erie West. And, and this would be very much close to that model.
Kind of the same thing.
Right, right. And, but what we are doing is we, we are designating, and we'll have more information at the work session, where we are designating staff, teachers, who will be assigned to just monitoring how students are doing online, academically, social, emotional, all those components, connecting with those families and those students to monitor how they're doing with this curriculum that they're using this other person to help them get online. But as a Perrysburg student, we want to maintain that Perrysburg connection. We want to maintain keeping those students in the fold and being a resource to them because they're still our students, just as much as those, you know, as a gifted student is. And I think there's going to be a period where we're going to be kind of feeling our way through. And that makes parents nervous and that's why we're getting so many questions. It's new to them and it's new to us as well. And we're, we're getting the questions answered and making sure that we're, we're addressing all their needs, you know, not only academically, but also that, that social, emotional piece too is very important to us. So, so hopefully that captures it and, and there's more information coming, more specifics.
Okay. I have a question that's been asked and I didn't know the answer. If you're going to homeschool, do you have to call and unenroll in Perrysburg or how does that, if families are listening that want to go that route?
Yeah. So the state of Ohio has a process that students, that families that want to choose homeschooling. And there is actually, they have to notify the district that they are homeschooling and list their names of their students and then they're basically removed from our roles as a Perrysburg student. So then they become independent. But we do have to get that information. You can't just decide in the morning that you're going to start homeschooling today. We have to have that piece to make sure that those students are being accounted for. And with, you know, child trafficking and all those kinds of things.
Sure.
If a student stops showing up, that gets, that gets us pretty excited in a short period of time. So there is a process and if they call the school, we can walk them through how to do that. And certainly the communication that we've sent out has highlighted that. We do it every year.
Okay.
Giving them instructions.
And do we have any numbers now? Has, you, you said you know how many people have signed online as of today? Do we know how many people are choosing homeschooling as of today?
I don't. 196?
196.
196 are homeschooling?
Is that homeschooling or is that the virtual?
Oh, sorry. Remote learning. Oh, remote. No, I was just wondering if the district knew and is keeping track of how many.
We do, but it's not a running tally for us. So every year we have families that choose that and I, I don't know, I haven't seen any numbers yet, so.
Yeah.
Okay, Brooke, I'm confused. He said 161 students have signed up.
That was as of this morning. She's probably got the afternoon's number.
So you're half of the class, you've got 196.
Yeah, we definitely will call the entire, yes, so don't, I wouldn't pull anything to that number because they assume that there will probably be a difference between now and when school starts for the fourth day.
So we, we did our survey and we estimated about 4%, which is about 225 students.
So we're on track.
So we're, we'll, the other thing too is I know, I've talked to a few other districts. There's two that are in our league, NLL league. One is averaging 12% online, full remote, and another one has about 20% is their estimate. So I think that's, I think, you know, that gives you an idea of where that could go. So I think, I think that number could drift upwards. And again, so much of this is dependent on what's happening right now and what people are experiencing in their comfort level. And when we did the survey with parents in June, I think people feel very differently about things now because I think it's gotten worse as, as we're approaching the start of the school year. So I think that 4% could, could climb. We're almost there and we have another, you know, week left, so.
Are you finding, this is just a curiosity question. I'm interested in the demographics. Will, will we find out how, how many people are signed up for high school, junior high, all of that? Will that become something that we'll be allowed to know?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. The, actually Brent and Brent Sortsmiller, Director of Teaching and Learning is, is working very closely. Joe Sarms is in that department. And, you know, they're, they're kind of data-driven guys, so of course.
Yeah, they are.
So with the 161, that was this morning, I mean, we're looking at, we do have a cross section of, of students and.
Okay.
Frank is like 16 right now. Again, this is old data. Fort Meigs is 19, the high school is 33, the junior high is 25. So we're, we're keeping a running tally of buildings and, you know.
I know you've gone a tiny bit very well, but we actually are going to make an adjustment to the monthly report number for what we get and we will actually add a section for each year where we're going to be able to see that breakdown of how many students are actually remote.
Oh, good.
We do plan on that, we just haven't got to that point yet, but once that's in place, once the deadline has, we can plan on adjusting. So in the monthly report, the report that we get will be done.
Okay, Tom, thank you. I think that would be interesting information. Now, once you, once you sign up for the Virtual Academy, then they have to stay there, what, for a quarter or for the whole semester?
So we're asking them, there's a, a week-long trial period that if they get in and say, this isn't for me, then there's a week. And after that week, we do have to fully commit and then we're asking them to commit either for the year or for the semester.
Okay.
Most are opting for that semester just because they don't know what will change. And again, the reason why is especially in the upper level, secondary level, you don't want students jumping out in the middle of a quarter and, and getting into a, a situation where their credits are not being captured for the time they've spent. So the semester is that logical breakpoint.
Okay.
Tom, is that week you referred to mandated by Perrysburg schools or by the Virtual Academy that's being used?
So the Virtual Academy, I don't want to get the terminology confused because we think about the Virtual Academy and we think about charter schools. So this is what we're calling the Perrysburg Schools Virtual Campus.
Thank you.
So, yeah, so that's okay. So I don't, people will be saying, what is this academy I'm hearing about? So, so the Perrysburg Schools Virtual Campus is, you know, that program and, and I'm sorry the, your question.
Oh, the, so the one week kind of, the one week trial, is that our guideline or is that mandated by the?
Thanks, so that, that's ours.
Okay.
You know, so, so that, it's, it's our guideline within the operations of they have to have a commitment. And there's a cost involved too. So, you know, we, we've worked it out where we can give you the trial period, but it can't be very long because, you know, they, we have to get licenses and get things and start to involve their people on their end.
Run up their staff and get their curriculum designed, okay.
Yeah, so, so that one week gives folks an opportunity to kind of kick the tires a little bit, so, yeah.
Just curious, do we, do we know, is it a cost per student? Is that what it comes down to?
It's a cost per student and it's also broken out by, there's some differentials with courses and things of that nature, so for the district, yeah.
Mr. Dow, do you have anything for Mr. Hostler?
You're open.
Ask her, Sue.
Gretchen, do you have any questions for Mr. Hostler?
I do not.
Okay, at this time then we'll take a motion for 3.1 to adopt the board resolution for partially suspending non-teaching employee contracts.
So moved?
Second.
Gretchen, could you hear that?
I think he said discussion.
Yes, a discussion on 3.1 on the resolution.
Right, right. No, I do not have further discussion.
Okay. I'm the translator, huh?
Yeah, thank you. Roll call please, Mrs. Harrington?
Ms. Lyman?
Yes.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Mrs. Dow?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Motion passed. Go to 4.1. Any others board discussion at this time?
I, I do have a question. Is, and maybe Tom can answer this, is Perrysburg hiring a full-time con, contract tracer?
Contact.
Contact, thank you. Contact tracer, full, part-time? Are we hiring someone specifically just to do that?
So at the, at the last board meeting, I had mentioned that that was something that we were looking to, to do. Now, hiring full-time, that may or may not be a plus one because we're changing staff and there's all different kinds of things that are happening. But at the last board meeting, we described every time that there is a positive test, we have to begin to coordinate with the Health Department in terms of giving them information as to who these students have been around while on our watch. So imagine if we get a call that a Woodland student and the sibling is a junior high and they both have been positive. So now we have to have somebody who's going to poll from each building, every single class list attendance, who's been attending on those days that that student, the Health Department deems that this is the window, the cafeteria, who they've been on, they have to call Transportation to find out who's been on their bus, who's at their bus stop. And we have to take all this information and then present it to the Health Department and they have to do a review to do that. And then they will call us and say, okay, here are all the kids in these two buildings in all these different situations. And, you know, you have to let them know, you know, because right now, what we're hearing the Health Department here in Wood County has said, we need your help to take on that because we don't have enough to do this. So then our, this person would then be creating a spreadsheet, listing all of those students' names, when we got the information from the Health Department, when they're eligible to come back, and then notifying, you know, helping facilitate that information from the Health Department to those individual families. And that's going to be going on every single day. And it could be a, a staff member who has that skillset that we're repurposing for that role. It could be someone internally that we're assigning that role to. We're trying to get a feel for exactly what that will do. But if we're going to do this well and, and provide that continuity across the district, if we leave it up to each individual building, those secretaries are going to be swamped now. And, you know, making sure that, that we have one person, if you have a question, Health Department has a question, if parents have a question, there is that one person that they can start with. And, and that's what we are hoping to do. So, yeah, we talked about that last time. That is something that I think is going to be important for us to, to maintain that.
That sounds like a monumental nightmare to try and, and do that. I just cannot even imagine.
We've had, I mean, this summer, we've had these things happen. And, and it's been, you know, we're not fully back yet. And, and me getting text messages on a Saturday night, emailing the Health Department, you know, getting information to go back to a parent, getting the, you know, having somebody pull the addresses and contact information. We sent a letter saying, you have a suspected positive, we just want your child to be aware or you want you to be aware your child has been around a suspected positive. And then when the tests do come back, then we're communicating back with the Health Department, coordinating with those families. And, and just going through that process now, this summer, we realized how important that is going to be, that there is someone that's going to wrestle with that, so. So yes, that, that's, you know, mentioned in the last board meeting and, and, you know, just a little more, you know, elaborate explanation. So we do have, like I said, not sure if it's going to be something that we're going to have to post or even, you know, a plus-one position, but it is something that I think we have to come to terms with. It's a lot of information we have to manage.
Anything, anybody else? Okay, at this time then we're going to cancel the 5-1 executive session. So I ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Roll call please, Mrs. Harrington?
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Ms. Lyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Mrs. Dow?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Meeting is adjourned and we'll see you all next Tuesday, August 4th, or next Tuesday, right?
Oh, wow, is it?
7:30?
Yeah.
7:30. Thank you for being here.
Oh my gosh, the Wood County Fair is already sp-